Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley Evan School District 6. Today is the 24th day of October 2022. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll force, please?
Director Bentley, Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Present.
Director Pappas.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
Five board members, present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. I do want to let everyone know that Mr. Bentley is excused tonight. He had a prior engagement. But we are glad that you are all with us tonight, whether you are here in person or watching this online or maybe even catching this a day after this Monday. But we're glad that you are joining us. Do you want to update everybody on a few things that have been happening in the district, but also some things that are happening or going to happen in the district? And first, we want to thank everyone who attended our District 6 Business Partnership Appreciation Breakfast. I don't know if everyone is aware, but we have a number of business partnerships with our district. Our students are provided internships with these various businesses. They gain valuable experience and work experience oftentimes in their pathway, in their academic pathway. So someone who is in the advanced manufacturing pathway might have an internship with a company like Vestus. And so we are so, so appreciative of this community and our business community and our business partners for making that happen for our students. If you are a business, if you run a business, if you own a business out there, we certainly invite you to reach out to us. And if you're interested in perhaps having an intern, we would love to have you onboard in this program. Also, we want to congratulate 11 Greeley West High School Business Students who have been recognized by the MBA Research and Curriculum Center for scoring in the top 10% of students nationally at the high school business final exams. And so congratulations to those Greeley West High School Students and to those teachers in the business pathway there. Also want to invite everyone to join us to Greeley Evan School District 6 Family Center, to join the Family Center at the Familia and Community Center Celebration on October 29th from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at UNC's Campus Commons. It's always a great event and we're excited to see people out at that event. And then I want to let everyone know that we are still looking for another two days, looking for a new board member to replace Ms. Pepper Mueller, who resigned at the end of September. So those applications opened at our last meeting. They are being held open until the 26th at 4:00 p.m. And so the application is not a long application, but does require some preparation and some planning. So please, if you're planning to do that, please do that in the next couple of days. And we look forward to seeing a number of applicants and interviewing those applicants in the near future. And finally, just want to say, because it is the 24th day of October, and we know that this is the time of year where everybody begins to show a certain amount of weariness in our system. And I see principals laughing. I didn't actually have you guys in mind, but I know you're weary as well. But for our students, for our teachers, we just know that we're entering some of the most difficult weeks. And we just want to encourage everyone to hang in there. Thanksgiving break is just around the corner. So if you are filling out college applications or you're trying to get the papers in or you're trying to get the papers graded or it's been a long few weeks, hang in there. A rest is coming and know that we on the board appreciate the great work that you guys do each and every day. So that's all that I have tonight. And so to proceed, we need to approve an agenda.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evan School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Director Pappas.
Aye.
Director Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. First on our agenda tonight is our Council of Student Representatives report. So Dr. Pilch, I will hand this over to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. I'd like to invite to the podium Mrs. Sheila Bowman and Mr. Aaron Allen, who are our two administrators who are the staff support to the Council of Student Representatives. And they're bringing students forward with them. I will just share, I was going to put it in my comments, but since they're up first, I want to just share that I had the opportunity to meet with these students as well as their colleagues across the district this past week. And I think I was supposed to only be 10 minutes on the agenda. And we ended up taking the entire agenda. And they had great questions and great comments and really remarkable feedback for me to bring back to our team. And I'm just so grateful for the students who serve on this committee. And they're very important to us. This is the student committee that stretches across the entire district that Ms. Pappas, who sits on it monthly with them, and I, when invited, actually have an opportunity to hear from. So thank you, students. We're just so proud of you and thank you again for filling my bucket up that night when I got to meet with you.
All right. So I'm Aaron Allen, Assistant Principal at Greeley West High School. And I get to be a co-leader for the Council of Student Representatives. This council gives students an opportunity to be a voice for our district. And tonight, we have our leaders here today to explain all the ways that they support our community. These are an amazing group of students and I look forward to seeing what we get to do this year for our community.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Pilch, I'm Sheila Bowman and I am the co-leader. And I'm also the principal for the online academy. But I'm so blessed to get to be here with these students tonight. We have the privilege of working with 21 student representatives from, like Dr. Pilch said, from all across the district, all of our high schools. We meet every other Wednesday from 4:30 to 5:30. And we usually are graced by the presence of Terry Pappas, who is so faithful and comes to bring the voice of the board and the district. And like Dr. Pilch said, we had a wonderful time with her last week. And yes, she's right. She did have 10 minutes and she left with two minutes remaining, I think. So it was wonderful.
It was not all my fault.
It was not all your fault. Because what was great about it, I think it was equally Dr. Pilch sharing about the district and kind of her vision. And then she was such a great listener and listened. We went around the entire table and every 20, every one of those students had an opportunity to be able to tell Dr. Pilch celebrations that they were having and then things that they were hoping to happen in their school. So that was a really wonderful time. With that, I just want to turn it over to our four officers who we have brought tonight and let them introduce themselves and share a little bit about our goals as a council.
Good evening, Dr. Pilch and School Board members. My name is Jilly Huang and I'm currently a senior at Greeley West High School. Thank you for having us here tonight to speak about the Council of Student Representatives. This will be my third year participating in the council and I'm so excited to lead this group of excellent people as the president this year. First, I'd like to shout out my co-facilitators, Mr. Allen, Ms. Bowman, who truly embodied the three main purposes of CSR the moment they committed to this group this year. This council would not have been up and running this early in the school year and for the 10th year without them devoting a significant amount of time and energy to carry out the purpose of CSR. Our three main themes include leadership, service, and representing our each individual high schools, but also representing student voice in the district and community. Because CSR was kickstarted so early this year, we are really hoping to share and expand our student voice in the school district any chance we can, such as speaking at the school board meetings and many more. From personal experience, I got to learn a lot about the effort for continuous improvement that is put into not only the education part of a student's life in D6, but also the climate and culture by participating in the Innovation 2030 Strategic Plan. And a goal for us this year is to have more student participation in plans like these and other district-related activities to provide a perspective. In addition to that, the council values service to the community. We have participated in a variety of events from the MLO Campaign Walk kickoff to the Success Foundation's annual breakfast. We have also hosted a few events ourselves, in which I will then pass on to Tommy to speak more about.
Thank you, Jilly. Good evening, School Board and Dr. Pilch. I am Tommy Medina III and a senior at Greeley Central High. And I have the great opportunity to be the Vice President of the District 6 Council of Student Representatives. This will be my second year on this council and I have to say, this is one of the best decisions I ever made to join this council. For one reason, I've joined this is throughout my years, I've been to the district from Scott Elementary to Heath to Central. I discovered that students should have a voice and need a voice. And I think by this council, we are getting those students' voices heard. As the council over the years, we have organized committee events such as the Carnival last year or a talent show. And I am greatly excited to announce the 2023 District 6 Movie Night that we are going to be putting together. We are hoping this event will bring our community together, whether it's either students, teachers, or regular Greeley Evans citizens. As part of the movie night,
Business Partnership Appreciation Breakfast. I don't know if everyone is aware, but we have a number of business partnerships with our district. Our students are provided internships with these various businesses. They gain valuable experience and working, work experience oftentimes in their, in their pathway, in their academic pathway. So someone who maybe is in the advanced manufacturing pathway might have a part or an internship with a company like Vestas. And so we are so, so appreciative of this community and our business community and our business partners for, for making that happen for our students. If you are a business, if you run a business, if you own a business out there, we, we certainly invite you to, to reach out to us. And if you're interested in perhaps having an intern, we would love to have you onboard in this program. Also, we want to congratulate 11 Greeley West High School Business Students who've been recognized by the MBA Research and Curriculum Center for scoring in the top 10% of students nationally at the high school business final, final exams. And so congratulations to those Greeley West High School Students and to those teachers in the business pathway there. Also want to invite everyone to, to join us to the Greeley Evans School District Six Family Center, to join the family center with, at the Familia and Community Center Celebration on October 29th from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM at UNC's Campus Commons. It's always a great event and we're, we're excited to see people out at that event. And then I want to let everyone know that we, we are still looking for another two days, looking for a new board member to replace Ms. Pepper Mueller, who resigned at the end of September. So those, those applications opened at our last meeting. They are being held open until the 26th at 4:00 PM. And so you do, the application is not a long application, but does require some, some preparation and some planning. So please, if you're, if you're planning to do that, please do that in the next couple of days. And we look forward to, to seeing a number of applicants and interviewing those applicants in the near future. And finally, just want to say it is, because it is the 24th day of October. And, and we know that, that this is the time of year where, where everybody begins to, to show a certain amount of weariness in, in our system. And I see, I see principals laughing. I didn't actually have, have you guys in mind. But, but they, I know you're weary as, as well, but, but for our students, for, for teachers, we just know that we're entering some of the, some of the most difficult weeks. And we just want to encourage everyone to, to hang in there. Thanksgiving break is, is just around the corner. So if you are filling out college applications, or you're, you're trying to get the papers in, or you're trying to get the papers graded, or it's just been, it's been a long few weeks, hang in there. A rest is coming. And know that we on the board appreciate the great work that you guys do each and every day. So that's all that I have tonight. And so to proceed, we need to approve an agenda.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Aye.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. First on our agenda tonight is our Council of Student Representatives report. So Dr. Pilch, I will hand this over to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. I'd like to invite to the podium Mrs. Sheila Bowman and Mr. Aaron Allen, who are our two administrators, who are the staff support to the Council of Student Representatives, and they're bringing students forward with them. I will just share, I was going to put it in my comments, but since they're up first, I, I want to just share that I had the opportunity to meet with these students, as well as their colleagues across the district this past week. And I think I was supposed to only be 10 minutes on the agenda. And, and I, we ended up taking the entire agenda. And, and they had great questions and great comments and, and really remarkable feedback for me to bring back to our team. And I'm just so grateful for the students who serve on this committee. And they're, they're very important to us. I mean, this is the student committee that stretches across the entire district that Ms. Pappas, who sits on it monthly with them, and I, when invited, actually have an opportunity to hear from. So thank you, students. We're just so proud of you. And, and thank you again for filling my bucket up that night when I got to meet with you.
So I'm Aaron Allen, Assistant Principal at Greeley West High School. And I get to be a co-leader for the Council of Student Representatives. This council gives students an opportunity to be a voice for our district. And tonight, we have our leaders here today to explain all the ways that they support our community. These are an amazing group of students. And I look forward to seeing what we get to do this year for, for our community.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Pilch. I'm Sheila Bowman, and I am the co-leader. And I'm also the principal for the online academy. But I'm so blessed to get to be here with these students tonight. We have the privilege of working with 21 student representatives from, like Dr. Pilch said, from all across the district, all of our high schools. We meet every other Wednesday from 4:30 to 5:30. And we usually are graced by the presence of Terry Pappas, who is so faithful and comes to bring the voice of the board and, and the district. And like, like Dr. Pilch said, we had a wonderful time with her last week. And yes, she's right. It was, she did have 10 minutes. And she left with two minutes remaining, I think. So it was wonderful.
It was not all my fault.
It was not all your fault, because what was great about it, I think it was equally Dr. Pilch sharing about the district and kind of her vision. And then she was such a great listener and listened. We went around the entire table and every 20, every one of those students had an opportunity to be able to tell Dr. Pilch celebrations that they were having, and then things that they were hoping to happen in their school. So that was a really wonderful time. With that, I just want to turn it over to our four officers who we have brought tonight, and let them introduce themselves and share a little bit about our goals as a council.
Good evening, Dr. Pilch and School Board members. My name is Julie Huang, and I'm currently a senior at Greeley West High School. Thank you for having us here tonight to speak about the Council of Student Representatives. This will be my third year participating in the council, and I'm so excited to lead this group of excellent people as the president this year. First, I'd like to shout out my co-facilitators, Mr. Allen, Ms. Bowman, who truly embodied the three main purposes of CSR the moment they committed to this group this year. This council would not have been up and running this early in the school year and for the 10th year without them devoting a significant amount of time and energy to carry out the purpose of CSR. Our three main themes include leaders, leadership, service, and representing our each individual high schools, but also representing student voice in the district and community. Because CSR was kickstarted so early this year, we are really hoping to share and expand our student voice in the school district any chance we can, such as speaking at the school board meetings and many more. From personal experience, I got to learn a lot about the effort for continuous improvement that is put into not only the education part of a student's life in D6, but also the climate and culture by participating in the Innovation 2030 Strategic Plan. And a goal for us this year is to have more student participation in plans like these and other district-related activities to provide a perspective. In addition to that, the council values service to the community. We have participated in a variety of events from the MLO Campaign Walk kickoff to the Success Foundation's annual breakfast. We have also hosted a few events ourselves, in which I will then pass on to Tommy to speak more about.
Thank you, Julie. Good evening, School Board and Dr. Pilch. Let me introduce someone. I am Tommy Medina III and a senior at Greeley Central High. And I'm, I have the great opportunity to be the Vice President of the District Six Council of Student Representatives. This will be my second year on this council. And I have to say, this is one of the best decisions I ever made to join this council. For one reason I joined this is throughout my years, I've been to the district from Scott Elementary to Heath to Central, I discovered that students should have a voice and need a voice. And I think by this council, we are getting those students' voices heard. As the council over the years, we have organized community events such as the Carnival last year or a talent show. And I am greatly excited to announce the 2023 District Six Movie Night that we are gonna be putting together. We are hoping this event will bring our community together, where if either it's students, teachers, or regular Greeley Evans citizens. As part of the movie night, we will have a raffle as well, where we can get a lot of involvement. And it's not just a movie, but a fun and bonding activity for everyone can enjoy. As the planning stages are still ongoing, I have to say that these community events mean a lot, not just to me, but to everyone. It gives the word to everyone that we care about them and that we, D6, is working hard on our education, students, and involvement. As the VP of this board, I'm really excited about the future of the District Six and the council. And as a senior this year, ending my education with Greeley Evans School District Six, I am, I am very honored to leave such great hands to everyone that's coming up behind me. And so I am very excited that this board is coming together to put these on events. And I'm excited that as my last year, I'll be a part of that. So thank you.
Hi, I'm Reagan Medalis. I am a junior and I also go to Greeley Central. I have the Communications and Treasurer position in the Council of Student Representatives, and this is my second year being a member. In May, we put on a community carnival, which had a wonderful turnout. It was my first time working with a team to put on such an impactful event in the community, which was a great experience. I believe CSR puts amazing and hardworking students together and provides them with the opportunity to actually engage in local events that we worked together to put on. We, as a group, are able to communicate well with each other and determine what would work best for our team. With the carnival, we started with brainstorming and from there separated into committees to share the work. After that, we would check in to see whether the other committees could assist in getting things done. And we were able to accomplish this amazing occasion that many families were able to attend. Being there that day, we all got to see our school year's worth of hard work absolutely pay off, and it was a great experience. Not only did we get to develop a strong connection among our schools in the district, but we were also able to bring our community together and offer an event where families and children, and their children could have fun.
Hello, everybody. My name is Richard Delania, a junior from Union Collin Purportory School, and I am the Secretary of CER. And I'd like to say that I am proud to be on this team, because we stand for service, leadership, and connecting our high schools together. This being my very first year on the CSR team, I have learned so much along the way. And every single, and ever since coming onto this group, I have been eager to succeed in our goals. One of the things that I love most about this group is how it connects our different communities together to communicate. For example, while I am only just starting out, I see how working as a group of students from eight different schools allows us to give different ideas and perspectives on various topics. And I just love that. I have learned so much that I've never knew before, thanks to this group. Secondly, I know how big the school district can be, but with CSR, CSR, we can bridge the gap from student all the way towards superintendent. Because actually, last Wednesday, we got to meet with Dr. Pilch, and we were able to give some feedback on how our own school experiences have been going. With opportunities like these, we can make District Six a better place for every student to fit in their future goals, whether it's pursuing further education or other passions. Anyways, thank you, everybody, for giving us your time and attention. Hope everyone has a good evening. Goodbye.
Thank you all for being here tonight. We may have a few questions for you before you go. I'm not sure if we do, but Ms. Sullivan?
Um, I apologize, the President. What was your name again?
Julie Huang.
Julie?
Joey.
Joey?
Julie.
Julie. I'm so sorry. I butchered that. I apologize. So I actually really like and appreciate when you guys bring the students in. I think that speaks volumes when you guys can come to the podium, speak with confidence, and you show your excitement, and you're sharing what you're actually doing, instead of having the adults do that for you. So what I would like to do is you had said that you wanted to help build this program larger. So here's some direct questions for you then. Do you allow more than 21 students in?
Yes, we do. We have positions for every school. And if a school would like to have more than, like, for the three main high schools, North Ridge, Central, and West, we have four spots. And then for the rest, we have like two to three spots. But if they would like more people, then we would definitely be open to that.
So I guess here's your platform. How does one get on there?
You can be nominated by your principals or an administrator from your school. Or if you'd like to be on it, you could just ask an administrator as well.
And is there a certain time in which they need to approach you to be a part of it for this year?
For this year, um, there are still some spots open this year for schools. So you might want to ask your school administrator for that. But usually, it's at the end of May, when we have, when we recruit new members.
How many of you are seniors that's on your board right now?
Um, about half, more than half, maybe.
So you have a lot of spots to fill then.
Yes.
Thank you for sharing. I just got educated. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Ms. Mash?
That actually answered my question of just how many students and from which schools. So I just thank you all for coming. I always enjoy your updates. And I look forward to hearing more about the movie night as well.
Ms. Pappas?
Well, you can all see why it is such an honor to go to their meetings. It is truly, as Dr. Pilch said, it is the highlight. The question last, at the last meeting was our favorite high school experience. And I can tell you, my favorite high school experience this year has been meeting with this group of students. You all are amazing. Thank you for coming tonight and sharing from the officer's perspective, and look forward to what you have in your future. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, guys, for, for being here tonight. As Ms. Sullivan was, was indicating, a lot of you guys are, will be graduating when. Congratulations on, on getting this far. Best wishes on all those college applications and internship applications and all the different things that you will be, will be doing. But also, if you, you're a student in the district, this is a great way to not only serve the district and learn about the district, but develop leadership skills that, that these students clearly have. So thank you, guys, for being here tonight. We appreciate your presence. Next on our agenda tonight is our summer school update.
Thank you, President Matthews. I think we have several staff, as well as Dr. Dattery, making their way to the podium, and Mr. Osmus. And you know, it's that time of year where we now have all the data from summer school and have collected that work that was done in our extended school year. And, and we want to pass it to Dr. Dattery and Mr. Osmus to start this presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. President Matthews and members of the board, Mr. Osmus and I are pleased to provide to you this update on our summer school programs from this past summer, as Dr. Pilch indicated, and the positive impact that they have had for our students. We also have joining us this evening Ms. Angie Mueller, Ms. Candy Gonzalez, and Ms. Marlene Rich. And they'll share a little bit more of the perspective at the school level and the experiences they had with our students. So as we always begin our Innovation 2030 updates, we just want to remind ourselves of our mission and our vision, and that our work is grounded and in this work. Further, our values as a district, and that we feel strongly that our summer school addresses many of our values, but specifically these three that we bolded this evening on. Our students come first, and we know that every child can achieve. And further, that we promote access, opportunity, and choice for our students. And so it is with that in mind that we design and created summer school programming. Student learning and achievement is one of our four focus areas that, and that is the focus area that summer school is grounded in. And more specifically, that of goal one, of providing that personalized learning experience so all students graduate on time and are career and college ready. Further within the strategic plan and this goal, we have these three outcomes. Of students graduating on time, as well as supporting students to meet state expectations on state assessments, both in ELA and math, all of which were supported by our summer school programming. We align our resources to meet grade level and graduation requirements. And that is really specifically the objective that we are working on. And further, that our actions, primarily within the summer school, is implementing that robust summer school programming to support our students to complete coursework and graduate on time, as well as because of, of learning gaps that were created due to COVID disruptions. Our summer school, as such, due to the, the COVID, the disruptions, the learning gaps that our students really did experience, we have fully funded this past summer, as we did the prior summer, this, this summer school programming fully through our ESAR dollars. So let's just start by taking a little deeper dive into our elementary summer school program. We held summer school experiences for 17 of our school sites, of our elementary and K8 school sites, some of which did have to be served at neighboring schools due to construction at their school site this summer. We had 1,634 students participate in our program this year, which was a half-day program for a full five weeks in the month of June. Then in July, we had four sites hold a jumpstart program that were supportive of our incoming kindergarten students. So this year, our primary focus of summer school at our elementaries was on math and literacy. That, that was our primary focus. And we also, though, did have opportunities for some local, as well as even Denver-based excursions. And I'm actually going to turn it over to Ms. Angie Mueller. She is our site facilitator at Madison Elementary. And she's going to share a little bit more with us this evening about some of those excursions, as well as some other summer school activities they took. So thank you, Angie, for joining us.
So thank you. Good evening, Mr. Matthews, Board members, Dr. Pilch. On the slide that you see up there, so there are some different excursions that happened for summer school. You will notice that some of the excursions came to different sites. The Evans Police Department, I do believe, went to Prairie Heights. We had some summer classes that went to Billy Martinez and to Centennial. And then Hyman went to the Butterfly Pavilion, but Hyman and Madison partnered together. And we actually went out to the Weld County Airport. And we had an airport, we had an airline career day is really what it turned into. We partnered together, and then we partnered with a group that is the Mile High Wing of Commutative Air Force. They are a World War II airplane club. And so they have an education outreach that they are also, that they do every year. And for the last two summers, they have brought three to four World War II airplanes out to the airport. And then our students, our scholars, were able to get in the planes. They actually got to sit in the pilot seat of each plane. They also, the men who fly the planes up to Greeley are our commercial airline pilots. So they had one-on-one time to talk about how to become a pilot, how to, the education that you need, what is the training, and what is different routes that you, is it always college? That you have to do to become a pilot. So they had that one-on-one time with them. Then there was, we, they also travel with their mechanic. So the mechanic of the, of the group had taken apart an airplane. They had taken apart an airplane engine. So he, one of the stations was to go over each part of the engine. So they got to touch and they got to see how an airplane is actually put together. Then they got to problem solve with paper airplanes about how to make them fly better. So all centered around college and career readiness. The best quote, I think, of the, of the two days that we were, or the two times that we went up there, was a little, one of our scholars got out of the airplane, and she ran up to me and she said, "Mrs. Mueller, I didn't know that girls could be pilots." And she said, "You know, someday I'm gonna fly. So someday I'm gonna do that." And I think that's what the excursions that we have the opportunity to do. I think they plant that seed, then that turns into a goal, it turns into a dream. And we are providing opportunities for students that they may have never had, never even dreamed of. So many of our students had never even been to an airport. They've never been in an airplane, and they got to sit in the pilot seat of a World War II airline, you know, airplane, and got one-on-one time with a pilot. It was, it's pretty incredible when we get to do those things.
Thank you so much. I wish I'd gone. Next time. I know. I'll do that next time, for sure. So one way that we assess the effectiveness of our elementary school programs, and certainly that is another way of what Ms. Mueller just shared. But, but we do look at the data, and we, we really analyzed and asked our scholars to pre and post in both math and ELA. You will see the gains here in our elementary data across every grade level for each of these two contents. And this data truly does illustrate the overall effectiveness of our summer school programs, that our teachers was able to provide for our students this experience, and did increase their scores on these pre-to-post assessments. So I'm going to now turn it over to Mr. Anthony Osmus, and he'll share a little more about middle school.
President Matthews, members of the board, Dr. Pilch. I'll, I'll talk a little bit about middle school. But first, I just want to send a big thank you out to all of our teachers and our principals and other staff who gave up their time this summer to make this happen. So without them, we don't have a program. And to the students and to the parents who got their kids there every single day, we are just very appreciative of all of them. So this summer, 439 of our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders from our middle schools and our K8s attended summer school. We focused really on core classes this summer, so math and English Language Arts. But we did have, did have some fun activities as well. We offered lots of electives and athletics. We went to a half-day schedule this year over the full-day schedule, just based on some feedback. It is hard to have middle school students come full days throughout the summer. And throughout the summer as well, we did have opportunities for our incoming sixth graders to transition to their middle schools. To talk a little bit more about the fun things that we did in our middle schools, I've asked Ms. Candy Gonzalez to come up here and talk about what she did at Prairie Heights, as she facilitated and led the summer school there. Candy?
Good evening. I hope everyone's doing well. Board President Matthews, members of the board, and Dr. Pilch. Thank you for having me here. I am honored to be here this evening to speak on behalf of the middle school programs. This summer, our focus was not only to enhance personalized academic learning and to provide a safe, emotional, and inclusive environment, but also to offer all students an opportunity to be self-directed learners. And at the same time, feel a sense of belonging to our school communities. This summer, we offered academic, physical, and emotional enrichment courses. In Maker Space and the Website Creation Lab, students built robotic kits, printed 3D creations, and were the masterminds behind collaborative website creations. The Paint by Number Mindfulness Room was a calm space where students could relax, focus, and just paint. The teacher offered soft music playing in the background and encouraged mindful breathing and self-awareness. If you have not tried a Paint by Number Masterpiece, you're missing out. The crime scene and DNA investigation class was full of engagement and rigor. Students were presented with a cupcake crime scene, yes, I said cupcake, cupcake crime scene on the first day. Students had to investigate to identify their top three suspects. Using the evidence from the crime scene, investigators completed a fiber analysis, collected DNA samples, participated in a virtual lab, compared animal and hair samples, lifted fingerprints, and studied a real-life DNA case. Once the crime was solved, the students found out that a summer school teacher had a sweet tooth. Our language architects participated in the Avid Excel Bridge Program, focusing on the habits of success and competed, and completed, excuse me, the Focus Note Taking Bootcamp with other summer school students. The outdoor sports program was a hit. Daily, students engaged in 45 minutes of physical activity. Everything from basketball, volleyball, golf, to disc golf. When it was too hot outside, students came indoors to play a fun game of dodgeball, with some adults in there, too. Our summer school program ended with students researching solar energy and building solar ovens to make a toasty smore outdoors. Now, we all know that it takes a community to raise a village. The Evans Police Department did not let us down. Officer McClatchy, along with several, several of her fellow officers, ran a teen academy at Prairie Heights Middle School. Students learned about crime scenes, fingerprinting, tested out the speed radars on 65th so they know who you are, investigated car accidents, and drove the obstacle course in the Evans PD Golf Cart. It was amazing. It was truly about students and their learning. Thank you for always supporting our program. and their learning. Thank you for always supporting our programs.
Thank you, Candy. Just like, um, and to measure our learning, like previous summers, we have all of our students take a pre-test, and then we focus on math and language arts, and then we take a post-test, post-test at the end of the summer. And as you can see, students really benefited from our, our summer programming. In English language arts, our sixth graders had a sixteen percent increase, seventh grade fifty-four percent, and eighth grade a six percent increase, and in math, a thirty-one percent increase, nineteen in seventh grade, and a twenty-two percent increase in math. And so, um, great gains. Um, so we had a strong focus on the academics as well as the fun at the middle school level. Also, we had Summit Summer School this past summer, and, um, middle school summit schools invited students to, um, to their summer school that scored lower than seventy percent on any COGS go, which, um, really is just, in summit terms, like skills inside a standard. And this chart shows the combined increase of students on their COGS skills that surpassed the proficiency percentage. And as you can see, some great gains for these students in the, in the summit program as well. All in all, our summer school yielded high results academically for our middle school and our K eight students. We move over into high school. So students at the high school level were offered an intensive credit recovery program for all grade levels, nine through twelve, that allowed students to extend their semester to complete missing work, retake a course, um, or even just do some credit recovery, unit recovery, to stay on track to graduate. We had over nine hundred students participate, um, in something this summer. That would be to, um, come to summer school, take an advanced class, or attend IB or AP boot camp. We did not offer these programs during the summer of 2020 due to COVID, but they were very well attended two summers ago, and then this past summer as well. Engagement and attendance can be a problem sometimes for high school students. And so, um, at, just like the middle school, we, we tried to wrap, um, some, some higher levels of engagement into our high school courses. And so, to talk a little bit more about that, I've invited Marlene Rich, who was our site facilitator at Greeley West, to talk about what they did this, this past summer.
Hello, thank you. Um, at Greeley West this summer, it was a little difficult because we did not have a building to, um, have anything happen there. So, um, our summer had to kind of extend a little bit. So with, with some extra dollars, we, I, I just want to talk about some of the educational field trips that we did at the end of the school year that led into summer. Um, we were able to send our math students to the CSU Spur, um, facility for a day. They were able to do that. We sent students to the STEM Day at the Rockies. Um, our theater classes were able to attend, uh, a performance in Denver. I'm sorry, I forgot the name of what they went to see. Um, but as far, and then, um, we sent a few kids to a CSU, a week-long CSU engineering camp, which was really fun experience for them. As far as summer school being fun in high school, it's really about getting your credits. So, um, we, for the last few years, um, the district has used Edgenuity as a way for students to regain credits, which is a computer-based program. Um, this year, we decided to look a little deeper because we didn't feel that it was fair for kids in the, um, between forty to sixty percent range, um, to have to really start all over. And we wanted to find ways for them to recover specific units. So our social studies and language arts teachers, um, picked a portable at a, um, middle school, and they were, allowed students to come in and just make up the student, the units that they were lacking. So rewriting essays, retaking tests, so that they were able to, um, get back on track that way. But the fun, the more fun and interactive way was our math and science teachers combined together and created, um, less, um, unit recovery lessons at the Pooter Learning Center. So the students were out there collecting water and mud and leaf bags. They were measuring, um, trails and just lots of outdoor activities. Um, so they were able, depending on how many days, they were able to recover a certain amount of percent in there. Um, we also did do some Edgenuity, which we did it for unit recovery, and also for our students that are able to fit government, classes like government and health into their schedules, um, so that they, during the school year, because of other electives. So those were the things that we did at Greeley West.
So, um, some of you heard a little bit about the unit recovery. So sometimes we call that extending the semester. So we have students who are working really hard throughout the semester, and something might have happened, and, and we offer a little bit more time for them to go back and master those skills that they may not have mastered throughout the course of the semester. Greeley West and others did a great job of honoring that work and, and allowing them to go back and, and finish up the coursework required to gain those credits. As you can see on the presentation, we did have over two hundred students this summer that completed one course or more. Um, actually, those two hundred and eighteen students completed three hundred and sixteen courses for one hundred and fifty-eight credits. And so we were very busy with the focus on, on learning this summer and recovering those credits. So kudos to those teachers and to those students, um, who showed up every day and, and worked hard, um, to get those credits back and get back on track. Our next steps now, um, we've already started really continuing our after-school, before-school programming, and even Saturday school to support students, um, in their coursework throughout the course of the year, as well as after-school or before-school that might have some enrichment activities. We'll continue to analyze individual student data to ensure that our students are on track for graduation and that all students are increasing achievement. We are still offering acceleration programming, um, in the course reading recovery. And one thing I, I do want to mention here is we'll continue to offer accelerated programming. This past summer, I failed to mention that we did over sixty students that, that, uh, that completed their accelerated geometry course, which put them in prime position then to take some advanced courses over the course of the summer. And we do coordinate that with all the middle schools and the high schools. So freshmen, um, sub-sophomore, and, and quite a few eighth graders, and we're able to take that advanced geometry class and, or accelerated geometry, and then get them ready for some, some higher-level learning. And then we'll also, like always, review academic and, and just perception data to, um, evaluate our own program and decide what we'll do this next summer. So thank you for this opportunity to speak to you about summer school, and we would welcome any questions you might have.
Thank you all, and thanks for being here tonight. Uh, we may have a few questions, uh, for you coming in. Ms. Papas.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for sharing this information with us tonight. Um, I am particularly, um, interested and excited about the elementary excursions. Um, that's been something that, you know, we, when we started thinking about how to, how to spend some of these Esser dollars, that was really important, um, I think to all of us. So it was exciting to hear about that. And then, um, additionally, just, I mean, my goodness, it makes you want to go to summer school just to do the DNA and the crime investigation. Um, I mean, it's, it, it just sounded like it was a good opportunity for students in all levels, including high school. I am, um, wondering, so you, so the summer school for the last couple of years has been funded with the Esser dollars. And so that's, um, what, what will we need to do to continue to offer these opportunities in the summer for all of our students, these exciting learning opportunities, and effective learning opportunities? And I guess that might be for you, Doc, I don't know, Dr. Pilch.
So Ms. Papas, um, you're absolutely right. I mean, this is, this is a big deal. Uh, as you may recall, before Mill levy override, we did not have an extended summer school to speak of. We had a few programs for a few days at some of our Title I schools. So, uh, the, these are ti- these are Mill levy override dollars, uh, to be able to continue this work. Um, it's pretty simple. It costs money to educate kids in extended school years. So we would look to our Mill levy override dollars to shift to these programs. Um, with new Mill levy override dollars, we wouldn't have that initial significant outlay for purchasing, you know, a dozen school buses a year, for example, or putting security cameras in the entirety of Greeley West High School. So that frees up some of those dollars then to move to extended school year programming.
So I just feel like that's important for people to understand. And I think that, yeah, I mean, yes, it was fun, and kids got to have a great opportunity in the summer, but just the data alone shows, um, the, the increase in academic achievement, which is the ultimate goal. So I just appreciate all of you, and thank you for your presentation tonight.
Ms. Mash.
Um, thank you very much for the presentation, and it does look like so much fun. And I just, I wanted to just point out, like, um, that we have measurable results, and that's very helpful to know that the dollars we're spending are helping our students. Um, and also, just great job with the innovation of finding the individual, the individualized plan, which is part of our strategic goals, for each student, even when it's in credit recovery, and not just doing sort of one-size-fits-all. Um, I so appreciate when, when I was in school, you know, summer school was like that dreaded thing, and there was a stigma surrounding it, and I hope that that's not the case anymore. It looks like fun, it's with your peers, it's individualized, and it's measurable outcome. So, um, and as a parent, my, my children did AP boot camp and the freshman transition program, and both of those were a lot of fun, a lot of help. Uh, my freshmen entered high school with like five or six new friends. So keep those up. Thanks.
I don't see any other questions for you guys, and I don't, I don't have any questions, but just, uh, just a comment. Um, and just to say thank you to, to the teachers who, who showed up in the summer to, to do that. I know that that's, uh, that is above and, and beyond, and I know that, I mean, they, they are compensated for that, but still to, to show up in Ju- June and July. And I think, I, I want to also pass on some, some thanks to them, because it's not only that our, that our kids are able to, uh, explore what they're going to do potentially, and be exposed to opportunities that they didn't know existed, like being a, a pilot, right? Um, and it's not just that, that we recover, uh, credit, and that we transition kids to high school better, and that we, uh, and we have academic measurables, as Ms. Mash said. But, but recently, we had someone from the food bank here just saying thank you to those teachers, to this program, uh, because this allowed us to feed, uh, this community, to feed kids, uh, during the summer. And so just one of the fantastic things, uh, that we do, and I couldn't be more proud and, uh, of what you guys have accomplished, uh, in the last few years. So thank you for being here tonight. Next on our agenda, our public participation regarding agenda items. And the board welcomes the comments of community members and has dedicated a portion of each business meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments to the board and to items that are listed on the agenda. All speakers are limited to two minutes for comments. The board typically does not engage in discussion or provide immediate response to the input, but will ask district sta- staff to respond as appropriate. A, a separate time at the end of the meeting provides an opportunity for other items regarding, uh, or relating to Greeley Evan School District Six. Uh, speakers will be heard in the order in which they sign up to speak, and priority will be given to students and parents. Students enrolled in the district, written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to the board secretary, not to individual board members. The board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect, and expects all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. All speakers must conduct themselves in an orderly manner, and all speakers' remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through twelfth-grade students. Anyone who disturbs order may be required to sit down or to leave the boardroom. Um, first up tonight, we have Ms. Sonia Miller. Ms. Miller is a resident of District Six, and she's here to speak on Work Session Two Point Zero Three, Board Candidate Orientation Business Meeting Seven Point Zero One Slash Eleven Dot Zero One Public Participation. Welcome, Ms. Miller. You'll have two minutes.
Hello, board. I wanted to talk to you about the meeting we just had upstairs regarding the open board seat and some of the question and answers you guys took. Uh, one thing that I wanted to note that a public, the person of the public had asked is what you were looking for in a board member. Uh, Matthew, Mi- Matthew, Michael Matthews, uh, your answer was basically somebody who's agreeable, or if they're not agreeable with all members of the board, they at least pretend to be agreeable and don't speak out against the other board members, even if they disagree with the decision made as a whole. You spoke a lot about collectivism and no individuality. Uh, that's not the point here. The point is to diversify, is it not? That's what you like to tell us, anyway. Uh, Pilch, during the, the meeting upstairs, admitted to purposely circumventing public meeting laws in order to have a discussion with board members about the C dot property purchase. So that means that there's a law in place for a reason, and that is so that all the board members, if they're going to meet and talk about things that involve the public and public money, have to make it a public meeting so that the public can be involved. Pilch has admitted upstairs on record to purposely going around that law, purposely circumventing public meeting laws, reaching out to one person at a time, one person at a time, one person at a time, and then coming up with a decision so that they can talk about it at the board meeting. That's against the law, Pilch. Uh, let's talk about that summer school presentation they just did. They talked about all of the progress that had been made with the, uh, summer school because they taught only core subjects such as math, English, science. Uh, what, what about we try that in school, in regular school? How about we quit teaching this CRT, SEL, LGBTQ, diversity and inclusion? How about we stop teaching all that and just go to core? Why were you interrupting me before my time was up?
You're not speaking to the agenda.
I sure was. I was speaking to summer school.
All right. Well, your time is up. Next on our agenda is Work Session Report.
President Michael Matthews and the board presented information about the current vacancy on the Board of Education, the application process, and details about the duties of the board and individual board members. Attendees had the opportunity to ask questions of the board.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Next up is our superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Matthews. Um, just a couple of announcements. Our open enrollment window opens November first. We have a lot of school choice here in District Six, lots of opportunities for students and their families. So it's really important that families educate themselves well about the different choices and the different focus programs in our district. Uh, that information is available on our District Six website. We do have about forty percent of our families who open enroll to a, another school, school, other than their home school. I will, uh, remind you that enrollment is up in District Six, which means that students are coming back. I was on a call today with several other superintendents in, in Weld County, and, uh, they have all reported to me that their enrollment is either flat or has gone down. And, uh, we're happy to share that many students have returned to District Six who were leaving us to go to some of our neighboring districts. So, um, open enrollment starts November one. You'll, you want to educate yourselves about that and, and be a part of that process. I'll also remind the board about the Meeker Beam Topping Ceremony this week. Uh, this is the opportunity to come out and celebrate that last beam being placed in, uh, a new building or an addition. This is an addition at Meeker Elementary. We were able to do this through our bond proceeds. Uh, and as you all know, that, that school was originally built for about two hundred and fifty-seven students, I think it is, two fifty, two forty. And, uh, we currently have over four hundred students in that school. So very good to be adding some additional classrooms there and some other, uh, workspaces there at Meeker Elementary School. And then the final thing I want to share is, in our strategic plan, Innovation Twenty Thirty, under strengthening partnerships, we have an action strategy that we, um, as district's employees will give back to our community. We ask our community for, for a lot. Our community gives us a lot. We have, uh, significant business partners. We partner with the food bank. We partner with United Way. We partner with the Community Foundation. And, and so many of these organizations give to us here in District Six. And so in an effort for us to give back to the community, uh, last Thursday for Weld Project Connect, we did offer to all of our building and district administrators to be able to come away from their work site and volunteer at Weld Project Connect. Uh, you know that, those of you who are familiar with Weld Project Connect, that event could not occur without community volunteers. And so just a quick shout-out to some of the folks who volunteered, and, and I know, th- these are just the folks I saw when I was there volunteering, or, um, who I heard about, so I may be missing some people. But I do want to give a shout-out, because, uh, these folks did give back to the community last weekend. I'm truly appreciative of them for engaging in this and, and stepping up in this way. So Ramon Reyes, Casey Pearson, Dave Upton, Anne Ramirez, Bob Billings, Steve Eisenhower, Jeff Peterson, and Nicole Peterson, and then Major Kinsley and Mrs. Kinsley from the Northridge Junior, uh, Marine Corps Junior ROTC program. They were out there with the cadets, uh, and the cadets were volunteering to help su- serve food and help with the teardown. And, and I'm sure there are others of, of our folks who are out there making that day happen. And I, I know for me, it's, it's not only an opportunity to give back to the community, but it's also an opportunity to engage with our community. And I, I had the privilege of meeting some of our families and, um, hearing their stories and, and, and I'm proud to say that they are... And 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 I'm proud to say that they are experiencing success and and really enjoying their time here in District Six, the families that I was able to interact with. And Ms. Pappas, you were there with the table all day as as part of your community organization that that you lead. And it was fun to hear one of the moms say to me that, as actually a parent from Jackson, say to me, oh, I got books for my kids. And I knew that those had come from your table. So thank you for your efforts there, too. Thank you, President Matthews.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Next on our agenda is to approve our consent agenda. So we'll need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evan School District Six approves items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts. Second.
Thank you both. Is any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none? Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda are to cancel some Board of Education meetings on December 26th, then March 13th, April 24th, and June 26th. And this is also an action item that needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evan School District Six cancels the Board of Education meetings scheduled for December 26, 2022, March 13, 2023, April 24, 2023, and June 26, 2023. Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on canceling these four board meetings? Not hearing any, so Ms. Lemon?
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is the consideration of District Unified Improvement Plan. And so this is an action item that also needs a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evan School District Six approves the District Unified Improvement Plan as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. And before we take a vote or discuss this, Dr. Pilch, would you like to present this Unified Improvement Plan?
Thank you, President Matthews. This item, as well as the next item, which is the consideration of the school Unified Improvement Plans, is a great deal of information. We have not had a chance to discuss these together. However, I know you all received them last week and have had a chance to review them. Dr. Dattery will give you an overview, and then we'll be happy to entertain questions you might have.
President Matthews and members of our board, I wanted to share a little bit with you about our our District Unified Improvement Plan and how that is actually created, developed, and how it comes to to be before you this evening. So we really begin this process early in in the start of a school year, really thinking back to May. And we develop it through the months over the summer as we gather that end of year data as well as summer data and our our CMAS state level data that we get through the summer months and finalize that in the month of October. We include our academic achievement team and also consult with our District Accountability Committee as we develop what the major improvement strategies will be, as well as the action steps. We identify the Priority Performance Challenge and develop those action steps, as I say. And all of this is true is in alignment with our district strategic plan. And it's really lifting out those things that within our data, what is it telling us? And how are we really going to take very specific actions to address it? So there are really three priority performance challenges that we identified in our District Unified Improvement Plan this year. The first is around ELA and math, academic achievement and growth, and really being specific to include our students who are English language learners, as well as students who have a disability. What we know is that prior to COVID, we were making gains as we analyzed our data and really showing some progress, very notably. Well, and and then we noticed that when when we went through COVID and and through the pandemic, many of our students experienced declines in their learning in both ELA and math. There were many disruptions, as we well know. And notably, to be of note really in this data is still that our students during this time, we did see an increase of students on our WEDA access on track data. We also have continued to see graduation rates increase and decrease our dropout rates. So really showing that emphasis within our school system on on ensuring that our students are really receiving as many supports as possible to support them in this in in their learning. And then this last year, as we know, we saw some pockets of improvement in our data this last year. Yet, it's not enough, and we know that we need to really focus on our student outcomes and especially really focusing in the areas of math, followed by literacy. So that's that first priority performance challenge. And the second one really follows right in line with that, knowing that students are struggling or some some students are struggling to really grasp the learning within the classroom environment and that we really need to be thoughtful about whether the MTSS or those multi-tiered systems of support that we need to put in place that will help them to be successful and have access to that grade level work and be proficient. And then the third is really focusing in, we've noticed through our panorama, family survey data, that our our family engagement is not where we want it to be. It's lower than is expected and lower than where it has been in prior years. So that is an area of growth and opportunity for us as well. So with that, those three priority performance challenges, we have three major improvement strategies with associated actions that are in your board packet. And the first is to really focus in on utilizing the resources we have, making sure they are aligned with the instructional strategies and the approaches in the classroom for students to ensure that they are achieving that grade level content. So what does that mean? That means that in all areas, really focusing on equitable grading practices and really redefining what that means so that all of our students are having not only the access to the grade level work, but also being graded upon that in an equitable way. We contract with WestEd in some areas to support some of our new administrators that are focusing on that work district wide, as well as the support of our Special Education Action Plan and the implementation of that district wide. And then very specifically in literacy and math, knowing that those are areas that we need to focus more heavily, really making sure that we have support programs that we are we're very thankful for the partnerships that we have with other organizations to partner with us in support of students in literacy, Colorado Youth for a Change, as well as United Way being one of those with the Reading Core tutors that we have in our schools. We also are fully K-12 Avid district wide, and so continuing to support that implementation for schools that are a few years or several years into that, as well as a few of our schools that have just come on this year. We continue with our co-teaching support and with coaches supporting our teachers, new teachers that are coming into this space, as well as teachers that have been doing this for a few years, to really fine tune those practices to support students to be at working at grade level. We're in year one of a two-year literacy, elementary literacy implementation. So that is, you know, really making sure that we're thoughtful about those implementation practices to support our teachers, to do the very best work with their students. And kind of combined with that is really this idea of powerful literacy leads, both then at the elementary level and then that support at the secondary level to continue to support language arts teachers in really making sure that that they are able to support their students at the rigorous levels of academic engagement. And then similarly, you see the math. We are in year two of elementary math adoption and implementation, and so really continuing to support our folks in that area, common assessments in both literacy as well as math and and supporting our K to 12 educators in that area. And that way, it just allows them to have that similar, not only data piece, but then making sure that we're focusing in on the standards that are necessary for students to be successful at and really be achieving at high levels. And just as we do with our powerful literacy leads, K to 12, we have those identified at the secondary level. They've been working on this for a few years, and it has really made a tremendous support mechanism for our for our secondary teachers primarily. Major improvement strategy two is really focusing, as I mentioned, on those multi-tiered systems of support. So this is when students are struggling, both in academic as well as behavior, what are the support systems that we're putting in place to ensure that they have have what they need, depending on where they are entering in? So it's really in alignment with a personalized learning and really making sure that we're supporting all students to be successful. So that really entails many of these different things from mentorship of both our students as well as our staff, that after school and summer programming that we reported on just a few minutes ago. And not only is that, as I mentioned, in summer schools, but also many of our schools engage in that after school programming, just to extend that day and and supporting students. Ongoing career and college readiness, we know with our CTE programs, the work that's engaged that is occurring in many of our schools is very much supported and making sure that those systems are supportive of all of our kids. We have been very thoughtful this year about our attendance rates have not been where they've needed to be. And so what is a more robust, how can we go after attendance in a more robust and thoughtful way and putting in plans to support all of our students? We know they've got to be at school in order to be successful. So our leadership and teachers have been working on that. Being really thoughtful about what are the very appropriate research-based reading interventions? And we did look at that this last year and implemented a few this year to support our our teachers and primarily in grades four through eight, that we've not had some of those supports in. We continue to support through our EduClima, which is a data platform and with plans and the supports. And it's been in year two of that has been very helpful. Our school equity teams play a very big part in supporting all of our students to to have those systems in place for them and that we're looking at each child individually and what do they need and not looking at them as, you know, not just the numbers, but who are they as children and what can we do to support them? FAST Team is really about those. Family and Student Support Team is what that stands for. It's that team of folks who does a lot of the wraparound services. So a student might have academic or behavior challenges, but sometimes we need to look what else sits underneath that? And how can we help provide some supports for the family so that comes in the way of either social workers or counselors or different folks in that way, behavior specialists as well, which leads right into that district behavior support. And then you heard earlier, just really knowing what Mr. Osmus was talking about with the high school credit completion and being very aware of not only it's not just about what students need to complete in their summer months, but how can we really extend that through the school year so that students have opportunities to complete high school coursework if they might just need a little more time? But that we ensure that they are getting getting that opportunity during the school year. And then in our last board meeting, we shared a lot of the work that is in our strategic plan, as well as in our district UIP around personalized learning plans and supporting our students in this way. So a lot in there. I know that that was a lot, but I think it's really important work, and it's, like I say, all in alignment with our strategic plan work. And then the third major improvement strategy, and that's really around our our families and supporting our parents and our families to feel we want them to not only feel welcomed, but be welcomed and have that sense of belonging in the school with their child. That that was not that certainly we kept a lot of folks, we had to do a lot of things differently through the pandemic. So it's really about re-engaging our families and our community into our schools. So some very specific action steps, continuing, we've been very deliberate and thoughtful about the ongoing consensus training that we have so that we are making not only decisions for our students among staff, but also with families and in partnership with families and students. As well, then thinking about that family partnership plan, that is a part of one of our focus areas and our goals in our strategic plan and that year one implementation. So it was developed really in the court through the course of last year. We shared that with you last spring. And so really this year, it's about that implementation of that year one with very in a strategic way. The curriculum support and implementation continues, and how do we doing that through that, thinking about that sense of belonging and bringing our our families alongside us in that area? And that is both when we think about the academic curriculum, as well as within the social and emotional learning support curriculum and implementing that in really thoughtful ways to support all students in this area and their families. And then finally, it's it's data analysis. If we have some very targeted data that helps us to really inform what our action steps are and to continue that work, not only at the district level, but at the school level and supporting our our schools to do that work. So I'll just wrap it up by sharing with you that just next steps for are to bring this to you this evening for your consideration and action. We would then be submitting all of our plans, including our district UIP tomorrow. In fact, they it is we submit those to the Colorado Department of Education for public posting and then really becomes the continued work of implementing this plan in throughout this remainder of this school year. So thank you for letting me share with you a little bit about what goes into our District Unified Improvement Plan from that district perspective, and I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery. I do think we probably have a few questions for you. Ms. Pappas?
Thank you. So I just want to say that over the last several years, one of the overall strategies was that quality tier one instruction, and that continues to be one of the focus areas. And I am just making the assumption that as we have new educators, that will continue to be the focus area because we have new educators, we need to continue to offer that quality tier one instruction, as well as the understanding of the multi-tiered systems of support. So I'm just noticing that and appreciating that. But I also want to bring out the point that we have been fortunate enough to hire family advocates, student advocates, the behavioral supports, again, through mill levy override dollars. And that that is, again, an important reason why we need to continue and extend the funding for these supports in order to support our families and our students. I'm just going to ask you a question. If there's one thing that changed this year that is different, I mean, there's a lot of things that are similar, and I'm just going to ask you if there's one thing that you would say you added in this district improvement plan that may be different?
There are probably several things. One that I would say really is the the inclusion and thoughtful, the work around the major improvement strategy three and really being thoughtful about what does that look like for welcoming our families and our community back in and the implementation of what was developed last year, just development of that plan, the family partnership plan, and then really that implementation, you know, really being thoughtful about that implementation of that this year. I'd say additionally, certainly some action steps. While the other two major improvement strategies you've seen, like you alluded to a moment ago, it's what does that look like this year as action steps to continue that work? As I noted earlier in, you know, and in the presentation, that when we analyze our data, we were making strides, and then we had some setbacks. While this last year, we didn't see all of everything get made back up, we did see some going back into the right direction. So just picking up what we know is good practice and being able to implement more of those practices system wide, you're seeing more of that embedded in this plan and to how to really to go to dig a little deeper in those areas. So like specifically even just the personalized learning plans, right? And that being a really targeted action and how do we support schools to be able to do that work? So those would just be a few examples just to share.
Sure. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan?
I know there's a lot of work that goes into putting these together just from being a former teacher and whatnot, so I appreciate the time you guys put into this. But one thing that sticks out for me is the equitable grading practices. Can you define and explain what direction we're going with this?
Thank you for asking. And I'm going to kind of start with that, and then I might even turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Osmus, as he's really leading that charge in our district. And so when we think about equitable grading practices, it's it's thinking about every child and where are they entering into this into that space and into that environment? And how are we making sure that as it is in that major improvement strategy one of saying all students will achieve at grade level expectations? How do we make sure that even when we think about grading, does it, if a student didn't complete, just as one example of thinking about what's equitable? One student could complete that course within this timeframe, and another student might need just a little more time to complete that same course, as we noted earlier? When we think about, does that, when we grade for that student, do we grade that with an actual grade, or can we give that incomplete, give them the additional time needed and so that they are successful and they can stay on trajectory and continue with their high school coursework? So that's one example of what it means that when you have those equitable practices, you're looking at every child and what do they need? But the standards are remain the same. How do we make sure students meet those expectations? Yes, please.
And then, and great question. And another one that we are working hard right now is just consistent, think about consistency. So if I'm a student and I go to an English class and they have one set of grading expectations, but then I go, maybe my friend goes to another one, and they have a totally different set. So how do we bring that closer together? So how do we bring that closer together so that we have more consistent grading practices so that there's not a disparity between these two teachers? So think about equitable, think about consistent. So consistent grading practices that that teachers can employ so that it is fair and equitable between the two classrooms or department.
So is there going to be some training for students as well as parents to help understand that so that they're not seeing that the grading system is subjective upon their student?
Yeah, absolutely. And we're not changing the grading system, so the grading system stays the same. It's just the practices inside so that it's more consistent across the departments.
Okay, you answered that question. That was perfect what I needed to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question, Dr. Dattery, just on our attendance plan. And, you know, it's an attendance plan for 2223, and so we're two months in. Do we have any data yet? Like, are we making any progress in in attendance, getting kids back into the classroom?
Yes, I am very excited to be able to share with you that there's been, there's definitely been some progress made. I actually just met with all of the elementary and K-8 principals today, and that was one of the data points that we are looking at. Looking at those, that weekly attendance and how how are they making progress toward that 95% goal that we know is so important? Many of our schools are, they look at it grade by grade, they look at it week by week, and they aggregate it at the building level and really being intentional about some students need an individual plan, some it's at a classroom level, some we need to bring in those, bring in parents and after they've had parent teacher conferences, having some of those conversations. So really, absolutely looking at that. We still have a ways to go. I'm not saying we're there yet, but as you mentioned, those first two months in, that is really front and center. It is a data point for all of our schools, really looking at their attendance because we know it matters for kids to be in school. Yeah, thank you for asking.
No, thank you. That's, that's great to hear. I had another quick question just on MTSS, and it says that we've yet to fully implement that or it, but it's, I feel like we were, we were implementing that or doing pretty well with that and before the disruption. So where, where did the pandemic particularly, specifically hit this multi-tiered system, our systems of support? And maybe that's not something that you can really answer.
Yeah, it, I'd say a couple of things. One is we didn't, we lost over time having that systematic approach of looking at what a student needed and how are we going to address that as a, at a school level, at a grade level, at a content level? And so within our program, we had to switch programs, that was not necessarily our doing, but we knew, you know, with EduClima being, and I say that because we, they were, they bought out another, what we were using at the time, which was Alpine Achievement. So we knew we had some interruptions in the creation of plans that were really designated and pinpointing and supporting students who needed those additional, you know, targets of opportunity and supports for them. So that's one of the things that, that when we say continuing, it's about that first and foremost, continuing that work and really building that out district-wide and system-wide. But then also noticing that as students came back to us, they came at different places and they didn't, the, the, the gaps that they had were not all the same gaps because of the intermittent learning of really in, for over the course of two years. So really being able to reevaluate and rethink, how can we put in really strong systems that are supporting our students in some similar and different ways than what we've had to in the past, has been the work of of our MTSS school teams and as a district team. So it's all, it is ongoing work as we continue to think about what our students need from us.
Thank you so much. Dr. Dattery, I don't see any other questions for you or for Dr. Pilch. And so thank you for, for this presentation. Thank you for bringing this and all of the, as Ms. Sullivan noted, it is a massive amount of work that that you've put together here. So thank you so much for bringing this to us tonight. And Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next on our agenda is our consideration of school unified improvement plans, and this is an action item.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley, Evans School District Six approves the school improvement plans for the priority improvement schools.
Second.
Thank you both. Dr. Pilch, I'll give this one to you before we discuss.
Thank you, President Matthews. So clearly, without really robust and and very clear school improvement plans, we cannot realize our district improvement plan. One feeds into the other and they, they work, they thread together and work simultaneously to move the student achievement in the district. And with that, I want to pass it to Dr. Dattery and Mr. Steve Eisenhower, who I, I think is possibly going to help out a little bit here.
Thank you again, Superintendent Pilch, as well as President Matthews and our board. This one's much shorter, I will tell you, and it won't take me as long to get through. But I think in large part, that's because you have such a breadth of information in your board backup, because every one of our schools has taken an incredible amount of time to put together a school improvement plan that is really going to guide and shape their work. So I just wanted to share with you a little bit about the process, and then I am going to turn it over to Mr. Eisenhower to share a little bit more about how that work is really done at the school level and what what's involved in that. But first, you have only two schools that are not in your board pack, packet tonight. That is university schools as well as frontier, and that is due to a House Bill sixteen fourteen forty, which allowed, allows our schools with a performance plan type to submit their UIP on a biennial basis, meaning that they can then do that every other year. We do that, all of, all of our schools who are on that performance plan do that. It's just, this year, it's just two. It's just in terms of the rotation and how they got on that. Our UIP development timeline, very similar to what it is for our district timeline, right? And so in the spring, they really begin to understand what are any of the changes that might be within the UIP system. There always are a few. We begin to analyze that data again in this very same way, May, June, before our principals leave, and they do get together with their building leadership teams and really begin to look through what does their end of year data look like? And then as they come back in July, to mid to end of July, and we get our CMAS and our SAT, PSAT data, they really start to analyze that and set those targets that are really going to, and strategies that will really move student achievement at the building level. And on September twenty-sixth, they do submit those to both Mr. Osmus and myself for review, just kind of an initial review and helping to, to look over and make sure that not only are we on target as a district, but also all of the requirements are satisfied from the state as well. We provide feedback and then we are submitting those to you this evening as well for your consideration and action. And then tomorrow, we will need to submit our school UIPs to, again, to the Colorado Department of Education for public, publication. The benefits of a unified improvement plan really are many, and our schools see this in large part, while it is a lot of work, it is helpful for them to think about aligning their systems at the school level and making sure that the requirements at the state accountability as well as federal accountability components are together in one plan. So there were days long before where we had many plans that schools had to do, and they might have to do a GT plan or they might have to do an EL plan. Now, all of those requirements are in one plan that we submit. It also provides for our, our schools to document what are the actual action plans that they want to take in order to improve their, their outcomes at the building level. It is transparent. Not only are multiple voices included, did they include, like we do, our district accountability committees? They do that at the school level with school accountability committees, multiple stakeholders, internal stakeholders with their teachers, their families and the like. And then these plans are all posted publicly as well on School View. And it really is about best practice. It's not, we don't just want to take anything. It's what, what works best for our students, and those are the practices that we want to lead with and make sure that we are monitoring our progress and ensuring better outcomes for students. So when we look at the unified improvement planning process, there are several things that we look at. First, it's a data analysis process. So we always start with the data. What are the current performance challenges that they're seeing? What are some of the trends that they're noticing in their data? Identifying the challenges and the, and then what are the root causes? What lives underneath the data that they're seeing? They then really look at setting the targets, right? And, and Mr. Eisenhower is going to talk through that real specifically, but we want to then say, if this is our priority performance challenge, what are the student-centered targets going to be and how are we going to measure those along the way? So we want to set those student outcomes and make sure that we are monitoring them. And the action planning is really about what are we doing as the adults, teachers, administrators, folks to support those student-centered targets to be realized through the major improvement strategies as well as action steps? And then we're monitoring our actions as well. We're monitoring to make sure that what we're doing is making a positive difference for students. And that's what the progress monitoring is all about. So at this time, I just want, Mr. Eisenhower, he is our principal at Madison Elementary, soon to be our James Madison Steam Academy K-8, and which is under construction right now. So thanks for being here with us tonight. He's going to share a little bit about how they utilize the UIP as well. Thank you.
Mr. Matthews, members of the board, Dr. Pilch, thank you for everything you do, first of all, and for giving us a few minutes tonight. As Dr. Dattery presented, all of our UIP plans throughout the district are, they start with being aligned to Innovation 2030. So even though we have specific needs to our own schools, each one of our UIPs is directly aligned to I-2030 and part of the strategic plan. We focus on our school needs based on the data that we analyze, beginning way back in May, which can begin with our WEDA data, our DUBLs, PBAs, NWEA, et cetera, depending on the level that we're at. And that's where the process begins, as Dr. Dattery explained. We really focus on major improvement strategies, specifically the student-driven goals that we want to target. And I'm going to just touch more on, on peeling back the onion of what it really boils down to is what did we not do as adults to ensure that learning was taking place? And so we, as principals, guide that dialogue with our staff, with our parents, with community members. Most of us, especially in our case at Madison, with our scholars, we have scholars at the table, and we ask them the questions, much like tonight that was presented, what can we do better? What do you need from us? And so we peel back the onion and decide from these data points where we could be stronger and where we could be better as the year approaches. And then as July approaches, we have what's officially known as the autopsy with CMAS, which is great data, but it's too late. And so we begin to look at where can we take that and use our checkpoints along the way to improve structure, instruction on a daily, weekly and monthly basis for the ultimate outcome, which is getting kids off of read plans into and above grade level in all academic areas. And again, as I mentioned, we monitor this throughout the school year. We have strong involvement with our community members, especially our staff, our accountability committees and our scholars, and we focus on our major improvement plans to, to reach that achievement. So that's it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. A lot of work goes into that. And it seems like a lot of work goes into five bullets, but really, as we looked at it, we really noticed that the, these are the big themes, these are the big ideas and the big focus areas of our schools. And again, it's very much in alignment. You'll see a lot of the same things inside of these five bullets that our schools are working on that is within the district unified improvement plan, as it should be and in alignment, as Mr. Eisenhower said, within Innovation 2030. So first, that quality first instruction in math and literacy, whether it's at the elementary where we have new curriculum, therefore really thinking about what is the, what is the instructional approach at tier one that they need to make sure that they are focusing on? And as well at the middle and high school, when we have our, our powerful literacy leads and powerful math leads, really supporting those teachers to have that high-quality instruction. The system of supports for students, that is the MTSS process and really focusing and making sure that they're looking at every child every day and supporting them in ways that make sense, behaviorally and academically, and really making sure that they're successful. Culture and climate is really that work that, that is that inclusivity, that sense of belonging that all of our students and our families and our community know that from the minute they walk in the door and that it matters. And so that's really some of the work that is also targeted in our, some of our school UIPs. I love that they really focus all of those things, looking then at the data teams and the data analysis and knowing that that work matters and putting really strong systems in place that support teachers to be able to then turn that into high-quality instruction. And then last, but certainly not least, is all the work at that post-secondary readiness and that's starting at the elementary and noticing that in AVID and in our implementation of the work within our smart labs, sorry, I almost forgot the, the word. So the work that we're doing around that, but then really seeing how that carries through at that middle level in high school so that our students are ready for whatever it is they choose to do when they leave our, our high school doors. So lots wrapped up in that. We thank you for you giving us a little time to share with you the process and the focus of these school unified improvement plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery. May have another question or two. We'll see if anybody does. I have one for Mr. Eisenhower, though.
I could tell.
And it's regarding something Dr. Dattery was just saying about building culture. And I've noted, I've noticed this before, I noticed it when I read through your, your improvement plan and then noticed you using the word scholar again tonight. And how important, I, I think I've got an idea of, of why you use the word, but, but it seems to be very intentional. So I just want to ask, why do you, why do you use the word scholar?
It's a great question. When, when I inherited Madison, the first priority I discussed with Mr. Tuttle at the time was to change the culture and take it from an elementary school to a campus of learning. And so we started calling the students scholars and discussing very clearly with them that we were on a path to help them become college and career-ready, give them the choices of, of different academic and, and passion areas that they wanted to follow when they reached the age of, of making that decision and that they needed to see themselves as lifelong learners and scholars and not just going through the motions of showing up to school. And so it's hard to believe it's been five years, but in the five years that, that I've been fortunate to lead, I think the other big piece is that the people we brought in to be staff members have also helped to change the culture to where the scholars truly see, as Mrs. Miller presented earlier, themselves growing up to be successful with lots of opportunities that maybe a few years ago they hadn't or would never have considered. So that's, that's one of the biggest reasons.
Thank you. Ms. Pappas?
Um, thank you. Thank you both, and thank all, everybody for the work. This is a very comprehensive look at plans. I just have a couple of questions. One is probably for you, Dr. Dattery. So as I'm looking at the individual school plans, many of them have a lot of the same strategy or action steps that you have, that we've outlined in the district improvement plan, but they're, they're just different. There's just some questions I have about a couple of schools that don't have as significant a plan. It's not as comprehensive. I'm wondering, do schools, individual schools have the, I mean, what's the autonomy at school sites?
Absolutely. There's definite autonomy. And if I really look back at this, this slide, oh, yes, thank you. I think it really helps to outline that first, they really have to look at their data at the school site and say, where is it that we, what is it that we need to really target and get really good at this year in our unified improvement plan? There could be a lot of things that we do, but as we really talk and Mr. Osmus and Mr. Tuttle and myself really guide our schools is to get really clear about what's your focus and what are you going to make sure that you go after and do really, really well? So for some, that gets very narrow. For others, they, they still do, they pick not only two, but sometimes three even, you know, we, we kind of like to, to stick around to if we can. It's, it's, so first and foremost, when I, when I think about that question, it's really about looking at the data. There's also some autonomy for some of our schools in utilizing a support tool and certain, Steve uses, uses this, what we call a PM tool. Not all of our schools do, and when they utilize the PM tool, that adds a layer of specificity to the plan, more targets around some outcomes and some action steps that is even more clearly defined than is just in the state UIP system as it as it stands currently. So that's also, because we have a fair number of schools that utilize that, but not all, that is also some of the difference that you might see in some of the school plans. And there is some autonomy as to whether or not they want to do that additional layer and utilize that additional PM tool. But it's really about what do their students need? What is their data telling them? And what are the adult actions and supports that they need to put in place in order to be able to support students to get to that next layer of proficiency and outcomes, and increased outcomes?
Thank you. And you can stay on the same slide, because my next question, my next question might be for you or it might be for Mr. Eisenhower. I'm just, I want you to help me make the connection between the action steps and major improvement strategies, because I see action steps are listed. But I'm just curious about, are the major improvement strategies or the, are they, help me understand the connection between an action step and a major improvement strategy and how those are determined or outlined?
Okay. So I'm going to start and then you can back me up, okay? So first, it's really starting with what's our priority performance challenge? So again, you could have several challenges, but let's pick the priority. And I love that word, let's prioritize. And from there, to say at a strategy level, what, and it kind of is similar even to how we look at our strategic plan, right? Like if this is what we want to go after, on a little bit bigger scale, what is that bigger major improvement strategy? What is, what do we need to improve upon to get better, to address that priority performance challenge? Once we've identified that that's what we want to go after and get better at and what we need to look at, we then have very specific action steps. So if we know that we're saying, these are the student outcomes we want to see different, then what are the adults, what are the action steps that we need to take to get to those outcomes? And those are, that has a level of specificity that at the strategy level, it's just that layer up. It's saying, this is what we really want to go after. What would you add to that? As you've really developed that at the school level with your action steps?
So I think, Ms. Papas, the example that I'd give is if the major improvement strategy is to decrease the number of students on read plans, then the action steps are what exact details are we going to do to have that occur? How are we going to accomplish that? And then how are we going to measure it along the way? So we set that as a priority performance and then have that as the strategy. But then what are the, again, what are the main ways that we're going to do to ensure that happens and then follow it along the way? The PM tool that Dr. Dattery mentioned is called the progress monitoring tool and it's from the Colorado Department of Education. It was originally designed for schools who are on turnaround priority improvement. It's an incredible resource. And so many of our schools have adopted it or adapted it to fit their needs. This is a great transparent report that we turn in. But in cases like ours at Madison, we really follow on a day-to-day basis the PM progress. And that's how we drive with our DDIs, with our observation and feedback, with other pieces that we have in place to ensure that that's, that strategy is truly happening and we're accomplishing our goals. Did that help?
Yeah, it's just a disconnect for me in my brain, an action step and a strategy.
That's a great example.
So I appreciate that. It just seems like there's so many action steps. I mean, there's a lot, and not just yours, but in a lot of the school improvement plans, so. Thank you.
President Matthews, Mary?
Absolutely.
So Ms. Papas talks about autonomy. When might a school have less autonomy, Dr. Dattery, in the development of their school improvement plan?
That's a great question. So schools that are at, as you mentioned, that priority improvement or turnaround definitely have not only more expectations and requirements from the state, at the state level, for the submission of their UIP. We also provide a lot more guidance, oversight, and support into what goes into that UIP. We really help to analyze that data and really look at what is it that needs, what are the things that need to occur in order to change the trajectory? Improvement, schools that are improvement, still get, while maybe not as much from the state, they still do get a lot of support from us at the district level to really make sure that we are utilizing those research-based strategies, the things that we know work, when implemented really well. And what are the things that not only to say, we want to do X, but how are we going to make sure that we monitor that so that it is done to high fidelity and to a high degree? So performance, schools that are performance certainly have then the lesser of that support and guidance and have more autonomy. Yeah.
Any other questions from board members? Right. Again, we thank you, thank you both for being here tonight. And it's so helpful to have a concrete example like Madison and to have you speak to that, Mr. Eisenhower, so thank you. And thank you, Dr. Dattery. I think we're ready for a vote. Ms. Lemon.
And Director Mash?
Aye.
And Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Papas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion curious, five zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. We are now to our public participation regarding non-agenda items. The board welcomes the comments of community members and has dedicated a portion of each business meeting agenda to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments to the board on items relating to Greeley-Evan School District Six. All speakers are limited to two minutes for comments and the board typically does not engage in a discussion or provide an immediate response to the input, but will ask district staff to respond as appropriate. Speakers are to be heard in the order in which they signed up, with priority given to students and parents and students enrolled in the district, parents of students enrolled in the district. Written testimony and speaker handouts must be submitted to the board secretary, not to individual board members. The board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect and expects all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. All speakers must conduct themselves in an orderly manner and all speakers' remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. Anyone who disturbs order may be required to sit down or leave. First, tonight, speaking, we have Mr. John Carlos Rodriguez. He is a student enrolled in District Six. Here to speak on climate and culture. So thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Rodriguez. You'll have two minutes.
Hello. Hello, my name is John Carlos Rodriguez, I am from Nicaragua. It gives me great pleasure to be here with you on this beautiful night. I am here to say how I feel about studying at Franklin Middle School. Franklin Middle School is a very good and unique school for giving more opportunities to children like me, children who do not speak English. But the teachers who speak Spanish and those who do not speak Spanish try to help us learn more in class and get good grades. I feel very happy to be studying in this school because I have learned many things, learning of lots of English. I enjoy studying in my classes. When I first arrived at school, I was a little scared and sad to have left my family and friends because they were the only ones I trusted. But when I arrived at school, frankly, the teachers and students have made me feel more confident. I'm happy and I want to be able to move forward in this great and wonderful country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you for taking the time to be here tonight. We know you have a busy, busy schedule. Next tonight, we have Ms. Rachel Weber, employee of District Six, also here to speak on climate and culture.
President Matthews, Superintendent Pilch, and members of the Board of Education. In a world where the news and social media seems to overflow with headlines of teachers leaving the profession, I'm often asked the question, why? Why do I work so hard? Why do I teach? Why do I stay? And for me, my response is simple. How could I leave this profession? You all just experienced a small slice of the magic that happens within the walls of Franklin Middle School. Each day, as a culturally and linguistically diverse teacher, I am surrounded by students like John Carlos, who continually strive to meet new levels of achievements. He is an example of excellence at Franklin Middle School. Another one of my students, who moved here from Guatemala in August, felt so welcomed by his new Viper family that he joined the cross-country team his first week in the US. And I recently saw him in science class, explaining to his peers in his third language, English, and his second language, Spanish, the concepts of mass force and gravitational pull. He is an example of excellence at Franklin Middle School. Another example lives within the heart of an eighth grader who moved to Cuba during the height, or moved from Cuba during the height of COVID. Despite moving to a new country in a world pandemic, I am proud to say that she passed her WEATA test last year, meaning she is fully bilingual after just three years in the United States. She is an example of excellence at Franklin Middle School. These are just a few of the examples of brilliance that make it an honor for me to say that I am a culturally and linguistically diverse teacher in Greeley-Evan's District Six. When I chose my career path, I could not even imagine being able to give students the opportunities that I have been able to give them through District Six. This district has helped countless students reach new heights, helping them open up a world of possibilities after they graduate. So let me ask you again. How could I leave this profession? I am District Six.
Thank you, Ms. Weber. Next on our agenda tonight, we have Ms. Susan Knuckle, an employee of District Six. Did I pronounce that incorrectly?
Knuckle. Like you're not going to...
Thank you for being here. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here to just share a few stories about the happenings at Billy Martinez Elementary School. If you didn't already know, we have absolutely amazing staff members. Erin Smale, one of our CLD teachers and a close friend of mine, worked with United Way, Colorado State Patrol, and Greeley Fire Department to provide a car seat safety course for 10 of our families, who will each receive a free car seat at the end of it. And that's happening this week. Roach Construction is building in addition to our school this year. And third graders who are currently working on their tiny home project were able to bring in Roach representatives as experts and they showed students how to make blueprints. Fifth graders are working on wrapping up our first official project-based learning unit for the year. They've been learning about the four spheres of the earth and are in the middle of writing a six-paragraph essay explaining each of the spheres and how they interact with each other. We're hosting our fifth-grade parent night this Thursday, where students will be able to use their sphere essays to teach their parents and families about the different spheres. And then they're going to work together to build a scene out of various materials that represent each of the spheres. I'm going to end with a little anecdote from my classroom. At the beginning of the year, our principal gave us a book to make note of the funny things our kids say throughout the year. And all of my entries are this one student. It was first thing in the morning and all my students, you know, were trickling in, getting their materials out for the day. This particular student announced, okay, it's time to get down to business. I said, all right, what's the business? And he said, cheese. Cheese and inflation. But I don't know anything about inflation, so let's move on to the cheese. Thank you for all you do for our district and for allowing me time tonight to share a little bit about my school. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Knuckle. Next up, tonight, we have Mr. Matthew Weber, employee of District Six. Welcome, Mr. Weber. Always good to see you. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, school board, Dr. Pilch. That's a hard ax to follow there. I just wanted to share some cool stuff going on with the Jefferson High School Construction Pathway Program. About, let's see, a month ago, a month and a half ago, we were able to participate in the Colorado Legislative Build Day Lunch and Learn. And this was an awesome day for our students to build Representing Habitat for Humanity here in Greeley and the Colorado area Habitat. Our students got to build alongside of Commissioner Perry Buck, City Councilman Tommy Butler, and State Representative Mary Young. This opened the eyes of the government officials to Jefferson High School, Greeley District Six, and what we do here in Greeley for our students. The students got to learn firsthand about city, county, and state government. This was a phenomenal event for our students. It was really cool to hear the conversations from students that, I mean, they don't understand the municipal governments, county government, state government, and how all that kind of works together. So it was really awesome to hear them ask the questions and get to hear it literally from the horse's mouth. Also, about two weeks ago, we had a contingent of nine professionals from Tuscaloosa, Alabama, came here to see what Jefferson High School Construction Pathway Program is all about. They have a career center, much like what we are going to have next year. And they also have an alternative school that has a program kind of like what we have here. They came here to see what we do, how they can make ours better, how they can make theirs better, how we can make ours better. Through this, the students got to really showcase who they are, why they came to Jefferson, what brought them to Jefferson, what opportunities Jefferson and District Six has allowed for them and opened the doors for them with the cooperation of Ames Community College, the City of Greeley, Greeley Area Habitat for Humanity, School District Six, and Jefferson High School. It was an incredible opportunity to feature Jefferson High School students, our staff members, and our students in the Construction Pathway Program. Lastly, and I know I'm almost out of time, tomorrow, we get to do the ground blessing for a 500-home unit. 176 of those will be Habitat for Humanity. So the future is looking great for us.
Mr. Weber, we look forward to joining you there tomorrow. Next up, we have Ms. Jackie Bellandier, resident of District Six. Ms. Bellandier? Okay. Next up, we have Mr. Steve Teetz, resident of District Six. Welcome, Mr. Teetz. Thank you for being here tonight. You'll have two minutes.
For the record, my name is Steve Teetz. I'm in Greeley and I'm on a committee called the Well, Abc. on Disabilities. First of all, before I get into more of my speech, I'm going to talk about the Well Project Connect. I was there too. I had privilege of being a navigator. And you see that people have needs. In fact, Dr. Pilch mentioned about, last time I was here, 70% of the families are below poverty level. And you can see that there. And some had children and everything like that. Most of them were probably struggling to stay in, having a roof over their head. And there's a few that was homeless. And so our committee, we've been talking about, you know, to have a conference or a forum about housing and homelessness. And been talking to United Way, as well as the idea to even the county commissioners. And we also, too, that I have read from the United Way, Well's Way Home, an extensive report about the trouble with housing and homelessness. And President Matthews knows a little bit about that, too. And I would recommend the whole board read that because it gives you some ideas as well as the problem. Also, I got here, too, with the committee of ideas of housing and home, and opportunities for housing, just an idea, and also, too, maybe some solutions along with that. Let's see. So I would like to give this a copy to when I'm done. Also, President Matthews, you asked a question about, whoops, about the school...
Your time is up, Mr. Teetz. I'm sorry.
I'll get the next one, next one.
Thank you for being here tonight. Next up, we have Mr. Chris Kaufman. Welcome, Mr. Kaufman. Oh, Ms. Kaufman.
It's Chris Kaufman.
Welcome, Ms. Kaufman. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, President Matthews, board members, and Dr. Pilch. I am Chris Kaufman. I retired from District Six after 24 years at Brentwood Middle School and I taught 11 years at C. Bosie's Alternative High School. I would like to thank the board and the superintendent for the fine job you were doing for our district. It's such an enormous and important task. I'm here to address my comments to the wonderful and talented teachers in our district. Please know that the vast majority of our citizens know full well that you do not teach critical race theory. It is a complicated academic concept that has been around for more than 40 years and can be chosen almost exclusively as an elective class in college. As teachers may teach about the history of our great country as it refers to slavery or civil rights movement, those issues are not, in fact, critical race theory. As far as social and emotional issues, our citizens with common sense know that classrooms are full of human beings who are social and have emotions. A teacher cannot build a community in the classroom that enhances learning by ignoring the social and emotional part of being together every day. Relating to our children in the classroom does not replace good parenting. Finally, our fine community of District Six knows that teachers have so much to fill every moment of teaching. knows that teachers have so much to fill every moment of teaching or preparing for teaching, that the idea of grooming students on gender issues is ludicrous and ill-informed. Teachers have a goal to help students grow up to be informed and rational adults who make their own life decisions. Good luck to all of our educators in District 6, and have a wonderful school year. You have our support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Next speaking tonight, we have Ms. Sonia Mueller. Resident in District 6. Welcome, Ms. Mueller.
I'm going to start with this crap. I am sick of all these flyers that come to my house. These are on billboards. These are in city medians. Maybe I need to go to the city council meeting and ask why the mayor hasn't done something about these being on public property. Mayor Gates, public property, these things are being put on and paid for by, they can't even find it. Growing Great Schools. Maybe you should talk to Growing Great Schools. They have quite a bit of money. Maybe you should ask them to support all of your nonsense programs instead of the taxpayer for 17 years. This says no tax increase. It's not a tax increase, it's an extension, which makes it an increase. This makes it a 17-year property tax. Vote no on 4A. And instead of talking about all the things that 4A funds or might fund, should it pass, how about you start talking about what you're going to cut when it doesn't pass? Now that the CDC's Advisory Committee, the ACIP, has advised the CDC to recommend the COVID shot for all students annually, it is imperative, and it is the law, that you inform every single parent in this district of their ability to opt their children out of this genocide. That can be done on the CDPHE website. You can ask the state for a certificate of exemption. Isn't that fun? Or if you have a doctor that knows the truth about vaccines, there's none here sitting on this board. But if you know a doctor or a nurse that knows the truth about vaccines, they can also sign an exemption for your child. You have to inform the parents of their ability to opt their children out of this genocide. Pastor Michael Matthews, 666 is still in our district logo, and you've not done a thing about it ever. Can you please do something about the 666 in our district logo?
Next up tonight, we have Ms. Angelica Weiss. She's a resident of District 6. Welcome, Ms. Weiss. You'll have two minutes.
To say that I'm disappointed tonight is an understatement. I honestly, I'm a little shocked, Dr. Pilch, that you just used this platform to push the MLO and threatened programs that benefit the kids first. Why is it always the programs that benefit the kids that gets threatened if the parents who can't afford to feed their children right now don't hand over more money? That's not funny, by the way. And there are other things that could be cut, like, for example, why is the new high school West Greeley, why is their hallway plastered in big screen TVs? That's something that bells and whistles that we don't need, that do not help educate our children. And to come here and to use district time and money to push a ballot measure, I feel like is slightly on the line of illegal. And I do not appreciate, I don't even need the rest of my time. Actually, I might need the rest of my time, because how about this? Let's talk about this money that you guys need so desperately. So before the MLO was passed, each pupil funding was $11,000 or just under $11,000. And this year, with the MLO, it's under $16,000. If the MLO did not exist this year, it would be about $14,500 per student. That's still $3,500 more than you would have without the MLO. So let's use our budget and look at it. Instead of, I know Mr. Bentley said you'll look at it if it doesn't pass, but how about you look at it first, figure out where you can cut the bells and whistles, like ID tags with chips in them that cost thousands and thousands of dollars, and use that money to educate kids that can't read or can't do math proficiently. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss. Well, that concludes our public participation tonight, and that's the end of our meeting. So we thank you for joining us. We thank you for being here. It's been a two-hour meeting, so thank you for your time tonight. Thank you if you're watching online. Our meeting is adjourned.